Well, welcome everyone this evening. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please, Ms. Spear?
Philip Combs.
Present.
Robert Estrada is excused. Mark Herr.
Present.
Lynn Larson.
Here.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Ellen Talbot.
Present.
And Sharon Wells is also excused. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Meeting minutes for April 2nd went out. Any revisions, comments, changes?
My approval is second.
All right. Mr. Larson first. Mr. Herr on a second on that. And before we dive into the... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, if any? Thank you. It's unanimous. Before we dive into the agenda, are there any edits or changes and adjustments we need to make for today?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Request that we move the five-year CDBG home consolidated plan presentation and the annual shoreline restoration activities presentation to before the unfinished business.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for a public comment today? I didn't see any lists.
Sorry, one person trying to do it all.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I could have.
Mr. Remack will let us know in just a second. If there's anyone online that would like to testify as part of public comment, please raise your hand. Don't see anybody online.
All right. We do have some people signed up. Yes, you had to come up. We'll call people up in order of signing in here. Please stand up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And comments are limited to three minutes. Ms. Spear will let you know if you get to that, if you get to that point and haven't wrapped up already. First, we'll hear from John and Cindy Gardner. Each one is... Go ahead and speak together if you'd like.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Gardner, and I live in Lakewood on Wild Air Road. And I sent in a question about the multifamily tax exemption. I wondered if you had considered the fact that most of the owners who build the property then sell it within a year or two after building. And then if the tax exemption is 12 years, I assume it would then be passed on to the new owners. So I wondered if there, if you have considered putting in a clause that would say if the property is sold, it does not go into another owner or into perpetuity for everyone. That's it. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you very much, Cindy. John, did you want to chime in too? Or... Yeah. Why's decision? Is Becky Hibbs? Is she here? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. You were on public hearing, or on the hearing comments there, which we'll label that a public comment. All right. And then the last one, if interested, Kim Underwood. Okay. Well, if there's no more, last call for public comment. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close our public comment. We have no hearing, public hearing today. So we'll move on to our business. And with their new order, first up will be 2025, 29, five-year CDBG home topic.
Joke before I get here. Good evening, Planning Commission members. The last time, I was before you, not choking, was about two months ago, when the city started working on its proposed five-year consolidated plan. Those refer specifically CDBG and home funding. That funding comes through HUD. And every five years, we put together a plan, how we're going to spend those funds over the next five years, in addition to a single-year plan for the first year of the five-year plan when it's enacted. So since we have last talked and went through this, the city has conducted two public hearings. We've taken the plan forward to a number of different advisory boards, advisory groups, general public housing providers, services providers, kind of got a general input from everybody involved that has a stake in the plan and what the plan serves, seeks to serve, which by and large is HUD-related income, low-income people. So people that are 80% or below are typically what this plan is looking to serve through either housing, public services, economic development, infrastructure, those types of activities. The five-year plan that has been developed as a draft has five goals that were established. The goals that were established, they all have high priority. They're fairly similar to the last five-year plan. So the five-year goals were advance, advanced economic development and equity. Again, this is for low-income people. That was goal number one. Goal number two was prevent, reduce homelessness and housing instability. Goal number three would be support diverse rental and homeownership opportunities. Goal number four was support public infrastructure improvements. Goal number five was stabilize existing residents and neighborhoods. So those are, again, they're fairly consistent to what we saw in the last five-year plan based on the demographics that we've seen, the community development resources, the funds that the city of Lakewood has available to it, and kind of what's been going on in the city over the last five years. So not a lot of changes. The first goal, advanced economic development and equity, is more of a city of Tacoma goal than a city of Lakewood goal. We haven't typically done that much for economic development. And City of Tacoma does a large number of economic development projects. The city of Lakewood tends to focus on housing and infrastructure projects. We have a much smaller allocation. We typically get about $500,000 in CDBG funds and about $300,000 in home funds. So the impact that we can make in the city of Lakewood is a little bit smaller than Tacoma, but I think we do a better job. We think we make a pretty good impact with the funds that we get. So over the next five years, the goals that we're looking to serve are primarily housing-related and infrastructure-related. So the city, based on the input we got, the kind of the top five priorities that we saw were more affordable housing, the development of more affordable housing, be that either single-family owner-occupied affordable housing or multifamily housing. Both of those were high need infrastructure development. So that was a kind of a big need. Open space, so parks, that sort of infrastructure was a large need. And then we saw the next categories were, would be four and five, would be public services and then code enforcement activities, so public safety, those types of things. So focusing on those kind of major priorities moving forward, the city was looking over the next five years to serve 20 households with homeowner rehabilitation programs. So we would rehab single-family homes for owner-occupied individuals that are low-income. 60 households would be served with emergency assistance. So those are projects where we, we close a property down and rather than make people homeless, we relocate them to a safer property and assist them to get into that. 90 individuals would be assisted with emergency assistance for displaced residents, kind of a variation on the, on a theme. It's the same sort of a program, but allowing us to pay for moving costs and some of the other things associated with it, not just first and last for deposits or assistance. Tenant-based rental assistance is a new program that we'd be looking to do in the next five-year cycle. We would be using home funds. And again, that would be a deposit assistance program. We, we got a lot of input from the public on the need for deposit assistance. There's not a lot of programs out there doing it. There's a lot of programs paying like Section 8 and affordable housing programs where you get monthly stipends to pay your rent, but it's the initial deposit that's kind of missing, the puzzle piece that's missing. And we're looking to hopefully patch that hole and serve 150 individuals over the next five years. We're looking to build some affordable housing in the city of Lakewood. So specifically, single-family housing. Over the next five years, we would develop eight single-family housing units with Habitat and/or homeownership center. Five single, or sorry, five units in a multifamily housing complex that losses developing would be affordable housing units as well. We would also look to serve 20,910 individuals through, sorry, through infrastructure development. And that sounds like a large number, but when we're serving a neighborhood, and it's a low-income neighborhood where we're doing the infrastructure improvements, we count all of the people in the neighborhood, so block-by-block group. So 20,910 would be served over the next five years. We also look to demolish 15 dangerous buildings. So in neighborhoods where there's slum and blight and some of those properties that are, that are sitting there, dangerous, we use funds to develop, or sorry, to demolish those and redevelop those. Ultimately, Habitat, for the most part, ends up redeveloping a lot of those properties. So that is kind of the, where we're going over the next five-year cycle. The infrastructure projects that Lakewood is looking to do would be kind of phased in over a three-year approach. So in year one, we would focus on housing. In year two, we would focus more on infrastructure. So there's a project in year two that we would do on, in near the Edgewater Park. There's a road that needs some improvements, multiple roads that need improvements, but we would use CDBG funds for that in 2026. In year three, we would go back to some housing improvements and new development. And then the last two years of the plan, we would focus back on infrastructure. And there's a couple of road improvements. If Parks is looking for funding, sorry, Public Works is looking for funding. One of them is in the Pine Street area of South 84th, just off of that. And the other one is on, I always forget the name of the last one, Seminole Road, which is by Tai Elementary. So we would be doing road improvement, streets, or sorry, sidewalks, street lighting, that type of thing in those neighborhoods. And those, those are areas where they're kind of small and isolated projects, and it's not easy for Public Works to find funding sources. So CDBG is a, is a great source to fund in those areas. That is where we're going with the next five-year plan. If y'all have some questions or some thoughts, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Quick question. Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive and good to learn. And it looks like great work. You've spent a lot of time on it, clearly. Is there any consideration for examining the city's building permitting process to see where unnecessary permitting requirements can be removed so to ease the provision of the housing component of your goals? I just wonder as to whether the government's doing its part to increase the ease of permitting of these projects.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the things that was pointed out as well when we did some of the outreach to the, to the public. They mentioned the permitting process and kind of streamlining that. And that is something that the department's working on as a whole. The director now is working on a new software system to allow easier permitting, kind of tying up some of the loose end. We had multiple different applications that you just have to apply for, and we're trying to get that into one comprehensive application. So there, there is work on making that process easier as well. And...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ms. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Gumm. I, I believe we might have, I feel like we saw this, this in our packet when we heard from you last in December, I want to say.
A similar presentation. This, this is a little bit more detailed than what I had originally.
Okay. Well, it's very comprehensive and very good. So good job on a very deep report. I did note the expenditures on, I guess, one pages, 181 and 182 of our packet. And I think, I think this question came up maybe from the last presentation, but as far as the, the way that, the history of the way that the funds have been spent over time, I just wanted to understand a little more. It looks like historically, we have not put dollars into economic development. What are the types of activities that that category covers? And then what is the, just, I'm just wondering curiosity, but what is the, I guess, reasoning for very little spending in that category?
Yeah. So economic development ultimately has to result in job creation or job retention. So you're, for every $35,000 invested, you have to create or retain one FTE. CDBG and home, they're federal programs. So you know the red tape involved with those programs. Typically, what happens is in order to qualify somebody, there's, there's a lot of documentation to make sure that they're low-income. There's a lot of documentation and loan documentation that we have to do with a business when we loan them money. And it's, it goes far beyond what a standard loan would be originated through conventional lending. I mean, there, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. So we haven't had a lot of businesses that have really wanted to kind of do all of that for us. We've, we've, over the years, we've had programs to do facade improvements where we were doing grants and even giving people free money with all of the additional requirements and Davis Bacon and some of the contracting provisions. It was almost not really economically feasible for them to do, so we didn't have a lot of takers. We've done some business grants over the CDBG coronavirus funds that we had in 2019 and so forth. And we were able to loan some monies out and get people to retain employees for those, for those periods. But it mostly comes down to just the, the red tape and the paperwork and some of the federal prevailing wage requirements and employment and contracting. It, it, most businesses don't want to spend the time to do all the requirements. So we've had a hard time getting economic development activities. But economic development under CDBG and home, well, CDBG in this case, I mean, it's, it's pretty wide open. It just ultimately ends up being you have to generate employment out of that.
Then very quickly, on the road improvements that you mentioned, where do you distinguish the... And the appropriateness for using CBDG funds for the road improvements that you mentioned versus the transportation benefit?
With CDBG, again, we try and find smaller projects. So if we end up with a half a million dollar project, I mean, that's for a road improvement project, that really is about a quarter of a block. It really doesn't go very far. So we try to find smaller projects that we can focus in on and use primarily CDBG, because when we, when we partner CDBG with general fund dollars or any other funds, all of the same federal regulations trigger for all of the other funds too. So we try not to put it into a really large project that doesn't have federal funding in it, because all of the other rules get triggered and it just makes it more complex. So we try and find small projects. So the ones that we found in, in the next five-year cycle are kind of really small projects that Public Works was really having a hard time finding funding for. The, its federal funds are really hard to find for small projects as well. So it works out pretty well to tailor the CDBG to kind of really quick, small, one-phase projects.
I think I was kind of, well, behind that question too, is when you say small projects, are we talking about like pavement rehabilitation? Or are we talking about like complete street amenities adding to the street?
Yeah. I mean, for me, a small project is probably a $2 million size project. So we're doing a block or two of sidewalk streets, curbs, gutters, street lighting. Usually, usually they're, and historically, they've been in neighborhoods where there's low-income schools. So we've done the, the walking pathways and so forth. And that's primarily what we focused on. So these are, the projects that we're looking at are fairly similar. They just need some of those smaller upgrades to bring the streets and the facilities up to current level of code use.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. And I know this is comprehensive. And when I first had, first had the chance to hear from Mr. Gumm many years ago, he's, he's dialed it back quite a bit. And here's a lot more work he's doing than is shown on here. So I really appreciate it. I, big, big commendations from me. I really appreciate all the work you're doing and the small amount of money to try and stretch it as far as possible. It's a, it's a tough gig, but I think you're doing a lot of good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to second topic, annual shoreline restoration. Is Dr. Faust here?
Yes, but Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a few comments before Dr. Faust speaks. So just give me a moment.
Okay.
All right. So yes, you will have Dr. Faust in just a moment, who is the Chair of the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council, provide the annual presentation to the Planning Commission per city council direction on shoreline restoration activities that have occurred over the last year in the city of Lakewood. But what I'm going to cover first is some of the things that the city itself has done. So you have that side of the accomplishments for the last 12 to 18 months as well. So it is in ordinance. When we adopted the shoreline master plan and restoration plan back in 2019, the city council said we would like to hear about the restoration activities annually at the Planning Commission level. And then also, if it comes up at one of these presentations where the, where the issues are clear, where the commission feels there actually needs to be some amendments made to the restoration plan, this is the vehicle to get that conversation started. So just a couple of comments to begin with regarding lake levels in the city. One of the things that our Public Works Department side of the house says is that the question about lake levels is pretty common. The gravelly soil in the lake is very quickly absorbs any rainfall that occurs. And so there's not a lot of, quote, standing water. But in addition, there's also a reduction in precipitation over the last few years. And what you'll see down there on the bottom is a chart of the last 24 years of precipitation for Pierce County as a whole. And you'll see that it does go up and down, but you'll also see since '21, it's been significantly lower than, for instance, 2019. We also have in the city stormwater being infiltrated from roadway runoff. And so if you didn't have that happen, you would have additional lower lake levels, because the stormwater is actually what's helping to refill, recharge the aquifer. So a couple of projects by lake. And as you're aware, there's, I think, seven lakes total in the city. But regarding American Lake, it was built to maintain a maximum height that was set in the 1950s, and the elevation height for outflow has not changed since then. At one point, we had stop logs on the south end of the lake with a fish screen, but the downstream structure will allow outflow if it gets too high. There is, again, that lower rainfall over the last few years, which has turned into lower levels in American Lake itself. So some conservation efforts and updates really quickly. The Chambers Clover Creek, excuse me, the Clover Creek Flood Study, which was concerned, if you'll recall, those of you that work here, a few years ago, it became clear through Army Corps of Engineers review of culverts and firm flood insurance program planning that there is a risk in Lakewood, as you see down on the map, of I-5 overtopping if you assume that the area around the current culvert in Lakewood fails. So there has been a study done since, and later this year, actually, the city council is going to be hearing from the department on next steps, on how to handle either improving the culvert or taking some other action to help avoid what this risk could mean. Worst-case scenario, you've got I-5 overtopped in the middle of Pierce County. The other things that are related to Clover and Chambers Creek would be actually funding the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council. They are, excuse me, recipients of a small grant program. And then Lakewood is also the one that covered the cost for the Clover Creek steam gate, stream gate. I'm so sorry. You'll see here are some improvements at Springbrook Park. Almost $2 million worth of improvements that happened in 2024. And you'll see the after pictures here on this slide. And then in addition to that, there is frequent cleanup in Springbrook Park of homeless camping. And over the last couple of years, that's cost about $10,000.
I think there's a water bind.
So sorry, everybody.
We can read it if that'd be easier.
Oh, yeah. What you also see here are some updates at Lake Silicon and then Edgewater Park. This is an ongoing improvement project. And the completion of the project in total is expected in December of 2027. But there's already been the cleanout of about 400 linear feet of blackberries, and there's going to be restoration of wetlands as well. This is a map along Edgewater Park of what some of the plans are, and then the link is there for the master plan improvements. Orange Lake Park, which is over right on the, what would that be? The northeastern tip of the city along, pretty close to I-5. There's a huge improvement going on right now in that park. It's about $5.5 million. And there's been cleanup that began in January of this year. Invasive removal has occurred. Habitat restoration is occurring right now. And then again, there's shoreline restoration happening around the lake itself within this park. This is an improvement project that is intended to be finished by the end of this year. So here's some before and afters. Upper left is the befores, and after, you see there, the improvement after the cleanout. In Wahop Lake, within Fort Silicon Park, there's also work in partnership with Pierce County Conservation District. There's monthly work parties, as described here on the slide, restoring approximately 300 linear feet of waterfront, taking again, out, out invasive blackberries, and then also planting low-maintenance native strawberry there. And this is a great opportunity just to bring people from the public youth and up to learn more about the maintenance that's required in our northeast area, where we do have all these invasive plants. But also, this is obviously a lake that a lot of people get to see and enjoy in the middle of Fort Silicon Park. And then we have the ongoing work through our operation and maintenance department, cleaning up trash when there's dry periods within Clover Creek, complying with the city's NPDES permit, the federal clean water rules, looking at the inspection that happens annually for business systems with their stormwater outfall, looking at catch basins and keeping those inspected and clean, about 50% of those each year, looking at curb lane miles, cleaning out debris that would otherwise be in the stormwater system. And then there are two stormwater treatment faults. I'm sorry, there were when it was incorporated, and then we now have 103. So with that, I'm going to step out of the way and let Dr. Faust present his information.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, year two of me coming and doing this, I think. So my name is Dr. Derek Faust. Although I am not here representing the college, I am an instructor in the Environment Sciences Program at Clover Park Technical College. And I am also the Vice Chair of the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council, and that is who I am here representing today to talk a little bit about shoreline restoration and other things happening in the watershed. Slide please. So the mission of the watershed is to promote the protection and enhancement of the Chambers Clover Creek watershed. We are a convening body of local agencies, citizens, and other groups to help coordinate efforts within the watershed and really share information about the watershed. That's the biggest, I think, most powerful thing that we can do is share what we know about the watershed. And we have a lot of folks have lived in, in the watershed for quite a long time. Yes, thank you. So the city of Lakewood is a charter member, and the entirety of the city of Lakewood is within this watershed. As mentioned, there are quite a few lakes, some larger than others. And we also have quite a few creeks within the watershed, obviously Chambers and Clover Creek, Flet Creek, Leach, Pont St. Leon, which, the stormwater which drains from this area is, goes into Pont St. Leon Creek. And then we also have Garrison Springs, which is, would be the southwestern part of the city, I believe. And the city does contribute $10,000 to our small grants program. That'll come up again because we really appreciate that, and it does a lot of really great work. So just a quick reminder, last year I did a more extensive of what the issues are in the watershed, but we'll, we'll sort of do it quickly this year. So we've mentioned trash, and yes, definitely trash in and around Springbrook Park is one of the issues, but it, we seem to be a pretty filthy species because we leave trash around quite a bit. So there's trash in all parts of the watershed and all the water bodies as well. We also have excess nutrients that can lead to algal blooms. And these algal blooms can either just be a very large amount of algae. Well, it's a very large amount of algae increase productivity, but some of these algae species can produce toxins, and that can lead to human health issues, pet issues, and even wildlife toxicity as well. So the lakes has, up, up through 2018, which is when the funding ended, for monitoring of these toxic algal blooms and the toxins they produce. The lakes, several lakes within the city, had annual or nearly annual toxic algal blooms, some of which have been treated in various ways. Another portion of the water quality issue is PFAS contamination or PFOS contamination. So the Lakewood Water District has had 13 of the 21 wells impacted by this, and they have received some federal funds to drill deeper. This particular contaminant comes from the use of the spray foam, firefighting foam from McCord Air Force Base, which is why there are some federal funds that came in to help with that. But it's still present. There is some treatment, but it is still present in, not only in the, in some wells, but also just generally in the groundwater underneath Lakewood and the, and the surrounding watershed. A more emerging contaminant, well, PFOS as well, is 6PPD quinine. This is the one that comes from tires. So a lot has been coming out about what to do with that one in terms of treating stormwater so that it can be removed from the stormwater discharge and not kill Coho salmon. And it's also been shown to be toxic to trout and other things like that as well. And of course, stormwater also carries quite a few other pollutants. We also have a water quantity issue. So mentioned that, how the lakes sort of rise and fall with groundwater and with precipitation. And we've definitely, even just within the past, since the new year, precipitation is, is low compared to where we should be. So Clover Creek does run dry for most of the year, and that becomes problematic, obviously, because, you know, fish and other organisms need water. So the picture on the right is actually the fish ladder right before Clover Creek comes into Lake Stillcome. So the, the creeks and the lakes are connected to, to the groundwater. So the water levels in the lakes do tend to fluctuate as the groundwater levels fluctuate. So you can actually see that in these two pictures. The photo on the left is when groundwater levels were higher in Stillcome Lake, and then when they're lower, and you can see the recession, still have, you know, you can see the, the sort of muddy bottom. And related to the water quantity issue, our Lakewood Water District, it's all groundwater, right? The water that we provide is all groundwater, which is advantageous in a lot of ways because groundwater is a little bit water, or groundwater is a little bit harder to contaminate, but, so it tends to be a, a good source. But it's also hard to refresh groundwater, to recharge the groundwater. So in Lakewood's, 60, over, just over 63,000 people are served, but overall, Lakewood Water District is providing to about 185,000 people, and then in addition to wholesale customers as well. Okay. There we are. So with having water quality issues and water quantity issues, right? No water in the creek or less water in the lakes, you can have, and other pollutants as well, you can end up with dead wild, dead fish, less wildlife, and just a whole slew of water quality, water quality problems that then affect the fish and wildlife as well. Less water in lakes means that the lake can warm up faster as well. So you can have increased temperature, that some fish don't like that because of low dissolved oxygen levels. So all these things are sort of tied together, right? In these water bodies. And the graph, or the graph picture on the right shows the different aquifers that we have within this watershed, along with the layers in between the aquifers that, so all the, you have these more shallow aquifers, and then you have the deep ones as well. Specifically, talking about Wahop Lake in Fort Stillcome Park, there was, there have been historic alum treatments that have occurred. Right now, there is a bit of a pH issue, which actually, outside of ecology's water quality standards. So the, a little bit alkaline pH, eight, 8.5 to nine. Remember, pH is on a log scale, so that means that neutral pH is seven, so that one and a half pH difference is a lot bigger than, than what it seems. There's also been less observe, observation of wildlife and aquatic vegetation. And the goal of the alum treatments was to address a toxin-producing algae. We now have a different algal species, had different, different folks have identified it differently. Other way, there's an algae, and if you've been to Wahop Lake lately, I was just there, I guess it is, a couple of months ago. But I would say over the past year, there's definitely been a green hue to it. So the algae are still present. So, but maybe not toxin-producing. We don't, that testing hasn't, testing last year around this time didn't find any toxins, which that at least is a good thing. So with these water quality, water quantity, fish and wildlife issues, there's some critical needs in the watershed. Management, better management and of groundwater and recharge, managing stormwater. So there's definitely some efforts to manage our stormwater using best practices in the city, and that, that's to be applauded. Protect our water bodies that are federally protected, but also ones that may not be federally protected anymore. And promote Lakewood shoreline health. This ensures that people can enjoy all of our various lakes and creeks. In terms of the seasonal Clover Creek flows, we know that's connected to groundwater. So any way we can reduce our use of groundwater and improve recharge of the aquifers will help bring flow back to Clover Creek. Big sort of issue is, a lot of the creekside property within the watershed is owned by private property owners. So it requires really effective outreach by whoever's trying to get that work done, to get connected with those property owners and try to, try to do some of this important restoration work. So the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council, as an organization, we, like I said, we can gather information and we communicate that information really well. That's our strength. So we, we take photos, we collect or help collect bird, bird data, birds using lakes and whatnot. Look at water quality data that others are collecting, and also the flow in Clover Creek and other creeks in the, in the area. And then some of these other things we'll talk about in more detail in the, the next slides. Let's see. Yeah. So first up, I get to brag a little bit about work that we do on Clover Park Technical College's outdoor lab. So we have 80 acres of Flet Wetland, which is the headwaters to Flet Creek. The, there is a stream channel that goes through the wetland, and then it goes underneath Lakewood Drive, and you have city of Lakewood owning part of it, and then some private, private property owners. It is surrounded by Himalayan blackberry, and we work to remove that, among others. So we can go ahead. So last year, I had a, almost $19,000 grant, and there was more than $20,000 in, in matching funds, mostly in volunteer time. That came from Washington Department of Natural Resources. And with that, in combination with some other funds, we were able to restore 10,000 square feet of habitats, mostly down by the wetland, and then some in our Gary Oak Savannah. We planted a lot of trees, I think, last year was north of 60 trees, and seeded probably 5,000 square feet. And we were able to help students learn, about 20 students learned about restoration techniques. And we also host community stewardship events. We have one coming up this Saturday for Earth Day, 9 to noon, and we'll be doing some restoration work. And as I said, a lot of volunteer time over the past couple of years, over 600 hours. Last year, we were a recipient of a small grant from the Watershed Council, and in collaboration with our construction technologies program at the college, we were able to build a 10 by 14 greenhouse, and the purpose of this greenhouse is for students to propagate native plants. And that'll happen by environmental science students. So you can see some photos of the greenhouse there. We are still working on getting water. So you can see in the top, top middle picture, there's some black tanks along the building there, and that collects rainwater from the, use your words, Derek, downspouts and the rain gutters. And our hope, or not our hope, we will use water from that, those tanks, 3,000, or 3, 1,000 gallon tanks to water our native plants. Similar to last year, there's a private property, Pearson Property, that has continued their work to restore along Flet Creek, just off of Bridgeport Way. So removing invasive species and putting in natives, and they are following recommendations provided by the Conservation District and the Watershed Council. There is a renewed effort from the Clover Creek Restoration Alliance to do a lot of stewardship activities, and they also do some advocacy work as well. But last year, we went, we returned to an area where some work had previously been done, the Apostolic Fellowship Church, which is along Clover Creek, or yeah, adjacent to Clover Creek, and it's just on the other side of I-5. So we went there to maintain some shrub and tree plantings, and we're, continue to remove invasive species like English ivy, blackberry, and poison hemlock, and clean up trash in, and adjacent to the creek as well. So that was a collaboration between the Watershed Council and the Chambers Clover Creek Restoration Alliance. They have also been doing work over the past year or so throughout the watershed. A lot of, they do work in Lakewood as well. The pictures that I had was, were outside of Lakewood, but these similar type of activities are happening in, at sites in Lakewood, planting trees, cleaning up trash, removing invasive species. So for this one, I'm going to quickly go through it, the text, mention the groundwater levels, and that precipitation has been lower than normal. And we also have increased demand for that water from the aquifers. So no flow in Clover Creek, but I think a picture tells, tells more, or a graph in this case. So this is the flow from the Clover Creek USGS gauge, flow gauge, near Stillcome, over, let's see, looks like not quite the past year or so, but what you can, so to, to give some context here, the sort of gray dotted line, which is higher than everything else, that is the median, the 30-year median, I believe it is, of flow. So that's really what it should look like, right? Based on our, our past 30 years or so. And then we have in the yellowish-green, I don't know what color you want to call that, that's 2023 flow, and the blue is 2024 flow. And you can see particularly between the months of, what, late, late August through, sometimes up through January, the flow is much below the median, much below where we would expect it to be. So to wrap this up, we've done this for a few years now and made some recommendations. So just reviewing those recommendations quickly, and whether or not they've been accomplished. So a couple of years ago, we recommended continuing support for the, the small grants, and you've done that. Again, thank you. Lot of great work happens from those small grants. Consult with Lakewood Water District and Pierce County to use the new USGS model that has helped in improved creek flow. So the model has been released, but I haven't heard whether the county and other, Lakewood or other jurisdictions have, have worked on that, what would really need to be a collaborative project, because streams just aren't in one jurisdiction. Continue this annual review? Uh, continue this annual review. Yep, here we are. Uh, and support staff attendance at the meetings. So there is occasional attendance and, um, it was highlighted that when it relates to, um, when, when agendas for our meetings relate to stuff that happening in the city and that's great. Uh, we would love to see, you know, maybe a little bit more consistent attendance because sometimes things come up that aren't on our, our agenda because we have partner updates and stuff like that. Um, and I did a quick calculation based on, you know, we have meetings once a month or two hours, so a hundred and sixty hours. Uh, if based on four forty hour work weeks, that's, uh, about one point two five percent uh, of time. So I think it's a pretty small percentage of time, uh, each month for someone from the city to come in and join us. And, uh, learn not only about what's going on within the watershed for Lakewood, but more broadly as well, because these watersheds are not just one jurisdiction. Uh, in twenty-three and twenty-four, um, follow the shoreline restoration plan component. That has uh, definitely ha- that has happened. So thank you again. Better management of stormwater and critical areas. There's been, definitely has been some progress on that. Um, some areas that could use some stormwater retrofitting, um, and, and things like that. So we'd be willing to, you know, key you in on those. Uh, collaborate with the Conservation District on shoreline restoration. So, uh, we've, we heard about the work in Wahop Lake. I know that's in collaboration with the Conservation District. There might be other examples and I will say, all of this is to the best of my knowledge. So if I'm wrong on any of these, it's on me. Uh, collaboration and communication between jurisdictions. So, uh, the Chambers Creek Trail is a collaboration between Pierce County, Lakewood and University Place and, um, it's looking really great. Um, so that's some really great work and there might be some other examples as well. We'd love to see that collaboration between, um, jurisdictions. Uh, include the, the Watershed Council and the plans for Edgewater Park. If, if my memory serves, it was presented, uh, to the Watershed Council. Um, any updates? That would be great, um, uh, to hear them as they happen. And then promote water conservation analysis of Lakewood Water District pumping. We'd, we'd really like to see that, um, to see how much water is being withdrawn. Um, and to my knowledge that hasn't happened, at least not in collaboration with the Water District. Okay, last year we had, um, a request from one of you after the meeting, I can't remember which one of you, for well hanging fruit. What would be some easier things to do? Um, so one of the things we recommended was revise the critical areas ordinance to increase buffers. So the, like for wetlands is the main, one of the big critical areas, increase that buffer around the wetlands to help protect them more. Um, I did see that there is some recent action on the critical areas ordinance, but I'm not sure if it increased the buffers or not. Um, share information about the watershed with residents. Uh, um, so I have seen information in, in the Lakewood Magazine or newsletter that gets sent out to residents. Um, we, we are willing to collaborate. So we're willing to help draft stuff up or read stuff over um, for infer, uh, for sharing information with residents. Uh, collaborate with the Conservation District. You, you're doing it. The more that, that the lit, the, the city can do, the better. Um, prioritize infiltration and filtration. So I know that, um, that's in the plans I read through and saw for the new apartments, I'm gonna say where Barnes and Noble currently is. Um, I, I know that, that I saw that in that. So I think moving forward, it sounds like the city will, will work on that, which is great. Because that is best management practice. Uh, support and expand toxic algae monitoring by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Dish, uh, De- Department. Um, so I mentioned that support for that was ended in two thousand eighteen, but we still have lakes that we know experience these toxic algal blooms. That monitoring is really critical for, for people to know when it's safe to enter the water or interact with it. Uh, encourage invasive plant species removal. Um, I haven't seen that happen in any newsletters, not saying it hasn't again. Um, but it would be great to see that in communications. And again, we would be willing to work with, you know, some ti- simple tips that homeowners that have some invasive plants could do some removal. Encourage planting of trees. Um, I've noticed with the new apartments going up, lots of new trees going up along with them. Um, perhaps more encouragement is needed along shoreline habitat for, um, our private landowners. Uh, direct resources for enforcement programs related to like stormwater and that type of thing. Um, it could be hap- happening in the future because I did see, uh, there's a new electronic permit software, um, being used. So that might im- uh, improve some efficiencies and allow some resources to be redirected towards um, doing inspections and developments and stuff like that. Apply for a grant to develop a concern, answer of water quality and habitat plan for Ponstaleone Creek. That hasn't happened yet, but, um, could happen in the future. Again, I did see in the plan for the apartments that there's some mention of, of perhaps doing some of that work. Uh, work with water purveyors to support water conservation. Um, yeah, this is big, like, we, there's a lot of water that's used in the city. Um, uh, and withdrawn from the groundwater. So it'd be great to, um, help, excuse me, help encourage, um, water conservation. And contribute, I, I have no here, but it's really a, a partial yes. Like I said, it would be great to have city staff have a little bit more consistent attendance at our meetings. So just new recommendations, these will be really brief. Um, continue to make progress on those past recommendations, um, that have been, uh, partially completed, um, or, or need work. And then brainstorm and collaborate on how to make progress on the ones that haven't been completed. And again, the Watershed Council is willing to, you know, have some, uh, meetings with city staff to, to work on that. Um, the last one, which is a little bit, uh, of a bigger one, we have Wahop Lake. Uh, the alum treatments have, we think successfully stopped the toxic algal blooms, but there's still algae present, a pretty large amount. Again, it's pretty gnarly shade of green. So, um, we would like to propose that there be a collaborative uh, community member, or I'm sorry, city and volunteer community member advisory board to develop future goals for Wahop Lake and plans for achieving those goals. Um, because it is, it is in force outcome park, lar- believe it's the largest park in the city. And it's a pretty big part of it. A lot of people walk around it. There used to be a lot of wildlife and stuff. Be great to see some of that return or more wildlife return. Um, so, uh, we are willing to, to put that together and work with city, the city to, to, um, on such an advisory board. And other similar collaborative task force could be formed related to other water bodies and other shoreline issues. Um, we, we know that the city values input, um, on matters that matter to the community. So in conclusion, uh, we know that Lakewood is growing and we know that, uh, a lot of development is often and, and the way it happens is dictated by the state. Um, even if maybe the city itself would like to do things differently, we know that some of that is dictated down from the state. Um, but using best management practices must be, uh, first and foremost in planning. Uh, it's really important for community members to grasp the connection between groundwater and surface water bodies here, um, because it, 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 we're not like the other larger watersheds like the Pialup and the Squally that get water from glaciers. It's groundwater connected and fed. Did I have an animation that broke? Maybe. That's okay. Um, so in, I'll, I'll just roll with my conclusion here. Um, oh, there we go. We are not anti-development. We just want to encourage smart development and um, science, scientifically supported management practices of our, of our water bodies. And, uh, you know, we can, we can do better. Science evolves and changes. Um, so we have to as well as we develop. And I think last year I shared that my dad, eh, was in construction, I can now say, because he retired at the beginning of this month. So again, not anti-development. We understand that, you know, we all like to live in our nice, comfortable homes. Um, we just want it to happen so that we can reduce our impacts on water bodies and other ecosystems. I'd be happy to take any questions at that. Thank you, Dr. Faust. Any, any questions?
Yeah.
Not a question necessarily, but just want to say thank you for this, uh, presentation you've put together again here for the second year. Uh, I've recently had the opportunity to sit at the Lakewood History Museum and listen to Mr. Chris Kaufman talk about the, our watershed and how the lakes are joined together and, and how it all works, um, yeah. In correlation with each other, um, was really interesting to hear experts talk about how what we do is affecting our quality of water and levels of water and, and what the impacts of that are throughout the, the city. Um, so I want to say thank you for all that amazing work. Um, also, um, I've been recently sitting in on a, a fair amount of the meetings at the Lakewood Water District. So you know, all this is tied together, development, management of natural resources and I, I kind of feel like I, I just want to say thank you to them as well because Lakewood Water District is pretty much leading the way on, on this, the PFAS contamination and really getting on top of that. And I think they, they deserve a little bit of a, a pat on the back for that. Because that is a monster, uh, challenge that they've been confronted with and they're really, they are out in front of it and making sure that our quality of water remains high and our availability of water to support the residents that we have that is continuing to grow also remains high. So thank you all for, uh, the amazing work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I agree, Lakewood Water District, I think, has done a really great job with the, the PFAS issue. Um, it's everywhere. Like, uh, I just looked at my parents' water quality report and they also groundwater, but they don't have like a a source of contamination, but it's still detected. It's still there. So it's just one of those contaminants that is very persistent and found almost everywhere. Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, I, I also want to thank you for your work, this presentation. Um, I always enjoy hearing from you and the information that you provide to us. It's, it's, um, it's very, uh, it's just, it's enlightening. Um, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, but, um, number one for, one is a comment. I really wanted to, I, I do agree and I appreciate the recommendation about, uh, whether it's a work group or a steering committee or an advisory board or a task force or whatever you call it. But I have heard and am aware of the, I think, long time, deep passion in the community for Lake Willhop and it's, it's, I mean, I think everybody remembers the wildlife and, um, you know, the vibrancy that was at, that was at the lake that you don't seem to find anymore. So I do appreciate the recommendation for some sort of, um, uh, mixed working group. Uh, it seems that there's, you know, quite a bit of, you know, between the Clover Creek Watershed Council, the Clover Creek Restoration Alliance, Pierce County Conservation District, city staff, um, and the consultants that we have available at our hands. I think that there is a very, uh, I think it's a ripe time to keep um, working on the discussion and developing the discussion so that all members have really a transparent opportunity to be heard, participate, but also learn the science and I think the differences in interpreting the science. I think that's a big part of the conversation too. So I guess that would, my, this is my long-winded comment and I would support a recommendation to council to consider whether it's some sort of mayor's task force or council task force or some sort of temporary, um, working group that can, uh, kind of have a space to have more discussion on that as well. Uh, the other thing I wanted to thank you for is your work in the Flet, uh, the Fletlands, the Flet area, the whole area. This is an expansive area that, that spans between Bridgeport to Lakewood Drive to Custer to Silicon Boulevard that I don't think many people realize was largely, you know, a good portion was farmland for a long time. And so the fertilizer runoff, the pollutants from that activity back in the day, um, you know, I, I think that's a large part why I enjoy hearing from these presentations. Just kind of so I can get the update on that, you know, that area of the city. I consider that to be a, a huge ecological asset. To that end, I have been curious about what, or I guess is there, um, opportunity for recreational use in any part of that area. I, and I ask that because from a conservation standpoint, what I'm beginning to see is kind of some overuse from, um, from among homelessness that, that, you know, people are looking for just a place to be kind of un, un, unattended or. So I just, I ask if there is, um, potential or opportunities for, uh, cons- conservational use through recreation, something that brings people to have constant eyes on the area. Um, and so I just wanted to pose that.
Yeah, um, and that's a great question. So the college, uh, we're state funded, so we're public institution. Um, so I do know that there, uh, folks from uh, the apartments right next door, they go and walk their dogs there. We do see the occasional homeless activity, pretty rare. Um, not that, like, I get it, like, I were to be unfortunate to be homeless, I would be setting up shop on the Flet. Um, because it is, you know, um, good place, but, um, it does, it, it can create, um, s- safety issues sometimes when I'm out there with students because we never know if, if someone's there who we're dealing with, right? And what their, what their mental state is. Um, but, so being that we're pub- like, we don't tell people that they can't go there. Um, I think sometimes that's the perception because we do have fencing, right? But the gate alongside Delcum Boulevard is not locked. Um, um, the reason that we have fencing is because it, trash, right? And before my time, it was, got pretty trashed up. Um, and they, the college spent a lot of money removing um, trash and homeless encampments. Um, and in fact, to that point, that grant that I mentioned, uh, from DNR, part of that grant was installing creation and, uh, design and installation of four interpretive signs. So it, that's as a way, we're not a park, it's not a park. Well, certainly people I know go there to walk their dogs to bird. Um, my biggest ask is just be respectful while you're on the property. If you see a trail, stay on that trail. Um, and, you know, if you walk your dog there, pick up your poo, do your dog's poo because I've stepped in dog poo on the Flet and other places and it's never, you know, that's not nice. So yeah, um, in terms of mixed use, um, there could be some opportunities there. I know that we've had some conversations with, um, Renee or, um, Kim, help me, the Green, no, the Trio Trails, Trails Organization, is it? Yeah, that's it. Uh, um, Forever Green Trails about having some connection with other trails in the area and have it cross over on the Flet. Um, I think they're sort of, sort of still working out that pathway. Um, I don't think the college would be opposed to it. We would just have to make sure that it aligns with the purpose of the lab of it's there as an educational resource for the college and for our students. Renee, go ahead. Yeah, and you do, for that way you sort of know where trails are and stuff like that. And the work that we've been doing, yeah, definitely. And you do not have to, like, some people are concerned about, uh, I, oh, I can't do the physical labor. I will find a job for you, even if it is just standing around talking to us and keep, and being a cheerleader, um, in essence, you know. Passing out water as well, yeah. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comments and appreciate your support for the advisory committee. I think, I, we really want to be collaborators, not, not only complainers, if you will.
Uh, Mr. Larson?
Three, three quick points. The first is that, uh, early in your report, you said that Clover Creek goes dry six months a year?
I think it's more than that. Certain portions, um, certain portions of it. It's, there are certain portions that, uh, outside of the city limits that will stay, stay wet um, longer than that. And that's, a- again, interaction with the groundwater. And you also have some beaver dams and stuff like that helping hold and retain water.
Is that not more reflective of just the recent years that it's been dry for that long?
There's been a trend of not just recent years. I think going back to the nine, early nineties. So we're look, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Since, uh, the, the Pierce County, uh, Regional Sewer Treatment Plant. Um, and that's, so relating to everything's connected, our, our water for taking showers, flushing the toilet, that type of thing, all comes from groundwater, right? Then we use it, that goes to the sewage treatment plant. It doesn't go back in the groundwater. It goes a, uh, right to Puget Sound, right? So-
I, I don't have experience prior to nineteen ninety-eight, but, uh, I've lived on Clover Creek since that time. And, uh, there have been years when it has flooded. Uh, and, uh, was one of our questions, the fire department, when we bought our home, uh, was, does it flood down here? And he said, no, it doesn't. We sandbagged one house on this and all the time. Uh, so, and it was, the quote, the creek ran year round. Sometimes in the summer it went dry for two weeks to a month. Uh, but in recent years, it's been dry for a good half of the year. So that's why I said in recent years. Uh, my second question is, uh, there was a reference laid in your report that said Clover Creek near Tillicum. And I don't understand that reference at all because it's not anywhere near Tillicum.
Yeah, um, you'd have to talk to USGS about that.
Okay, yeah, if, if, I guess you're a federal, uh,
Yeah, the gauge is-
On Google Earth, that maybe it is close to Tillicum.
Yeah, so the gauge is Pacific Highway. Yeah, it's on Clover Creek near, uh, Pacific Highway South, so.
No, it is not. It goes through the city of Lakewood. It goes under, under the freeway. And, uh, and, and all, and all, and all the way down.
I think she, I think she's saying when it goes under the freeway, there are the checkpoints.
And they call that the Tillicum Station or something? Yeah, I get it. I live on the creek. I, I know where it goes, yeah. But it doesn't have anything to do with Tillicum. I guess that's my point.
That's just what they call it. Um, you know, different gauging stations. They, they have different names.
Okay, and my last point is that you said in your report that there, uh, that, uh, your work is, uh, sometimes considered, um, anti-growth. And I think that stems from lack of information. That if you had in your report and in your work that the, what the economic cost of accomplishing the protections for the water, uh, resource, uh, I think that would go a long way in terms of, uh, of having citizenry in general, instead of thinking you're just grabbing the use of land for, uh, some reason that's not explained. That I think it would go a long way if you had an economics, uh, cost section of your, uh, of your work. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, in terms of the economics of it, all this work is happening either on public property or private property where the landowners are willing. Um, so it's, you know, and we're using volunteer time. So in terms of the economics of it, like I said, over six hundred, uh, six hundred dollars of volunteer time just on the, the college's outdoor lab property. And at the, um, I think it's thirty-seven, around thirty-seven dollars that's valued at, uh, over twenty thousand dollars a match in one year of, of, you know, and in terms of benefit. Um, and then you can, you can start to look at the benefit of having, um, you know, healthy ecosystems um, for the community and whatnot. And that, it, that can be really difficult to do. Uh, to assign a number to, uh, what, what does wildlife watching provide in terms of a benefit? It can be really difficult to do that from an economic standpoint, but yeah. But I, I do agree that having numbers associated with things, it helps people make a connection in terms of the finance side of things for sure. Any other questions?
Uh, no more questions. Thank you very much, Dr. Faust.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, much appreciated. I think I, I went over my time, but, um, I appreciate-
We appreciate your time and, and work there. All right, um, let's jump into unfinished business. Is there anything you want to preface this with? And, you know, we've got a, a little bit of an undertaking here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. One second. So we are back, um, tonight for the Planning Commission to take action on the residential target area and multifamily tax exemption program updates that have been before you now for a number of meetings, both last year and this year. And I'm just going to walk through a few highlights before turning it over to you for action. Just as a background, the MFTE program was first adopted in Lakewood in two thousand and two and then it was significantly updated in two thousand and twenty-three in part because there were some changes by, uh, the state with how the program was regulated at that level. But also just to update, uh, how Lakewood was handling it on its own choice. There were also residential target area regulations adopted first in two thousand and seven, and then, um, those were expanded in two thousand and fifteen. And then there were the residential target areas basically that you see now were, um, again in two thousand and fifteen. Lakewood's MFTE program can only be applied within the adopted residential target areas. Last year, uh, again, some of you recall this, some maybe knew, uh, there was a discussion about this. And, uh, the council heard after the Planning Commission did the initial recommendation that came forward. And based on the response from the general public, they sent it back to the commission for some additional public outreach and, um, gathering of information before the council took action. Within their recommendation to come back to the Planning Commission was, uh, the review of an expansion of the central business district's residential target area. So the state law for, um, the, uh, met, sorry. The amendments in the multifamily tax exemption program are focused around the proposed extension of, um, an additional twelve years beyond the initial authorization. And just to make it clear, there are criteria for that within state law that the city must follow. Um, at, they must meet at a minimum the locally adopted requirements, um, for the exemption applicable at the time of the application extension. And the applicant commits to renting or selling at least twenty percent as affordable, uh, units to low-income households. So that's, uh, at least eighty percent or less than that of area median income. If you do have an extension of a twelve-year exemption authorized, uh, the applicant must at the end of that provide tenant relocation assistance equal to one month's rent. And then the program itself is scheduled to sunset. No extensions may be granted on or after January twenty-one of two thousand and forty-six. Within the city, this is a graphic that is, uh, meant to demonstrate for you, uh, not only one project, but a number of projects that would be, um, the property revenue coming into the city either without the MFTE, if that, that project didn't move forward versus because it has, this is the amount, amount of money coming in. And I don't know, Mr. Remack, if you'd like to add any more to this or explain it in any more detail?
Is this our document or is this from the state?
Uh, this is City of Lakewood specific projects.
Yeah, so this is our document. We went ahead and took a look at the MFTE programs, uh, those that have participated in it since two thousand and eight. Uh, you'll see on the left, there's a total combination of how many houses have been developed, what we saw for dwelling units, eight hundred and thirty-seven dwelling units that were generated by the program. And then when you look at the table to the right, you'll see in four-year increments, the total value and increase in what we saw. The one thing that when people, we've talked about this before, that's important to remember, and it is on the next page, so when we move to it, when we get there. But, um, when we do not collect, the tax exemption only applies to the structure itself. When you look at it, the land and property itself, the value increase and change that you see, that is still collected on by the tax servicing districts as well as the city. So when you look at it. So when you look at the first four-year increment, which was in two thousand and eight, it's about four years for a program really to take off when you look at it. The reasoning behind that is applying for the program. There's the initial priority that you have for the property. Then there's the construction. So you'll see the sales tax that comes from the construction valuation of building that. Then there's the closing, the two years when you're looking at it about for the build, the closeout. And then we go into where you just see the revenue from the actual land value increase while it goes quiet. Even in the first four years, when you're looking at that, when you're not collecting the valuation, it was about a four hundred and seventy-nine percent increase in the land valuation that was seen with the project when it came in. That first one being Oak Grove and looking at it. So the program, when we look at it, is about economic incentive. Really, that is the driver behind what we're looking at. There's been questions about, well, what do we lose when we look at it? The reality is we see an immediate increase. What it does is it affords a break to the person on the taxes that they're paying for that when they're moving through it. Like, some of these projects, when you look at them, will be paying eight hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes on the structures themselves. That's a large amount when you're also standing up the program. Reality, when we look at it, one of the comments that we've heard before has been about, um, how long we keep it. I think we heard that last time we were here. Reality is the owner who owns it, it doesn't change the fact that it's an incentive and it's an economic driver. Really, what is the purpose of the program? Whether it's owned by the original builder or they sell it and then they move on forward. It's the fact of what it's generating when it comes to economic incentive that did not exist without the project itself. So what we have here, and you look at it, this is every project we actively have in the process right now. Starting from two thousand and eight to those that have already applied and will go out in two thousand and twenty-six. Looking across a twenty-four-year period, it's a forty-one million dollar gain in what we look at for the tax incentive from the program.
Larson?
Do you have a jobs count, uh, to the temporary construction jobs that are accomplished by, uh, uh, the, the projects that RTA makes?
So no, the, this number right here doesn't count some of the other items that are there. So we went to look at with Pierce County because Pierce County can calculate what the incidentals are related also to the construction and what moves with it. This is just the actual tax revenue. That's not the job creation or any of the other incentives that come with the program, the economic incentives.
Seems to me it belongs in the, uh, in the discussion.
Uh, that definitely helps. I, I'd love to get a copy of this. So this, uh, this again is the tax revenue. We're, we're not voting on, or there's no push for MFT. We have it. This is just about the RTA. But, um, I think Lynn, really good point, like, this is just the benefit we get from tax revenue. Um, and then you still have the jobs that are generated, whether it's one or a hundred, it's going to be more than zero, which is what you get with nothing, right? And then you have, I'm sorry, you-
No, and, and the only thing I would point out when we're looking at this is this is an option for people that own the property. That's the reality of what it is. The zoning that already exists, if they wish to build it, they could build it if they could finance it.
Today, they could, yeah.
The protections exist already because we looked at that when we came and we built the downtown subarea. We recognized there were protections that needed to exist for those around it. That's why there's height limitations of not being able, if you're a hundred feet, you can't be more than ten feet over the other projects around you. The fact that there's a thirty-foot buffer when you look at it, that twenty feet of that is required to be landscaping. There were separations that were built in on purpose when we developed the subarea plan, knowing that there needed to be distance between what we're looking at. Um, the other thing, when we look at it, some of the comments that we've heard have been about the, the owner and, and losing of their shop. This is not a taking in any way. This is just an option for a person who owns the property when they look at it. The person who owns the property, that's a commercial venture that they want to move to. If this is also a commercial venture to go to multifamily, when you look at it. Apartments are a commercial activity when you look at it. So that's another thing. Um, and it's really a property owner's choice is what we're speaking to more than anything. They don't have to move forward with it.
Yeah, thanks.
But this graph only exists because the, the multifamily tax, the apartment buildings are offering, are providing affordable housing units, right? I mean, you don't, you don't get the, you don't get the tax exemption for existing as a multi, as a apartment building. You get the tax exemption because you offer for a number of affordable units, right?
That, that is not correct. You can move forward with the eight-year. Um, so there's an eight-year and there's a twelve-year MFTE. The eight-year MFTE can move forward without having to offer, they can offer at market rate. The twelve-year is a requirement for twenty percent affordable housing to be able to get the twelve-year extension.
Okay, okay, thank you. He, okay, but the, the other, I guess the other comment that it comes to mind is that how do you, okay, so for the apartments that are offering affordable units, how does the city stay on top of, over the twelve-year period and beyond, um, ensuring that there are units affordable in the, are they self-certifying? Are they?
They're, they're, they're not obligated to do it beyond that. They're signing up for a period of time.
You're, I believe you're asking about monitoring.
Monitor, yes, exactly. So how do you ensure that in year six, for example, that the five or the four out of twenty-four units are being charged rent at affordable housing level, at a, at affordable rental prices as opposed to what they were going into in year one? Does that make sense?
No, I, I understand what you're asking. Um, I'll be honest, I don't have the answer for that and the Spears may have it.
I can answer that. It's an annual certification. Every city's required to do it. It's a state thing, so it's not exclusive to Lakewood. So every year you have to go through, they have to qualify, they have to show the evidence of it. And if they don't, then they lose the benefit. So they're incentivized to make sure that they meet it.
And, and we do have that program here.
Yeah, we do have.
Yeah, I guess that's, so that, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure is that, is, I mean-
There's accountability. Thanks for this. And, uh, yeah, so again, we're, we're not voting on MFTE. It's just RTA expansion potential, but I do, I do want to just emphasize how important of a tool it is. It's like going out and trying to build a house with a screwdriver as opposed to having a whole tool belt. And right now, it is not the best program, but it's the best tool we have today. Um, and so I am a big proponent of it because we are not seeing that investment money come in. We're not getting new housing at the rate we need. We're, and we're falling further behind in that. This does focus on market rate, so eight years market rate, twelve years, um, at eighty percent, you know, and then twenty percent affordable. Um, anything beyond that, and I've heard reference to this in notes and other things, low income, extremely low income, those are a different pool that, that falls under eighty percent or less of AMI and then sixty percent. And I don't, I think it's thirty percent now. They've adjusted, adjusted, uh, very low or, or extremely low. And so it, it's a, it's a different thing. But I, I also think that when you get a hundred new residents, say you have a hundred units, all that, all the construction costs for doing it is taxable. Every time the property trades, there is a real estate excise tax, which is also tax revenue. And so all of that goes back into building the infrastructure, the system that we have, provides the services that we need and supports the tenants that are there. And then you have a hundred new people servicing our businesses. And so it's an economic driver. That's one of the reasons why it's listed, I think, number four under, um, the State of Commerce as an item. I know we're not voting on it, but I just think it's important people understand that, that this is a really effective tool for a lot of cities and you can- For a lot of cities and you can, this is evidence I've never seen, just focused on just prop- property tax revenue, usually. Every lines I, I added in like you had said and, um, but this is a pretty big uh, difference. And you know, what, what's interesting, and I don't know what the year span is, I can't tell off this, twenty four years. The, the real difference in my mind is not the, the twelve year or ten year period. The real impact is twenty four to fifty, the end of life of that product. So that's when it has to get renovated, torn down, something else new, but what did we gain as a city from that period? And as you can see, it, it does get uh, much better. That said, um, can we have you keep going on this R T A and, and?
So uh, just a clarification as well, because there are two amendments being proposed or recommended under Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter three point sixty four. Which is the city's M F T E program, and that is to allow uh, the twelve year extension in the um, central business district area. Outside of that tax increment financing area of the sub area, sorry. Um, that Ms. Newton prepared and discussed with you last time.
Ms. Spear, on, on this one, we talked about potentially having a different version of it and it, um, you know. Peter off over time or have a de-escalation.
Right, that would be the next slide.
Okay. So, so I was just curious if that was feasible.
Yeah, we'll be touching on that in just a second, but the point here is that it's already allowed. The extension is allowed already in our code. In Springbrook and Station District. The question tonight is whether to also allow it in a portion of the downtown. So um, and this is exactly the question you had, Mr. Chair. So we did go back and review both the statutory language that authorizes the M F T E program. And spoke with the Department of Commerce staff who oversee this and um, neither one uh, said anything that. Like this was an anticipated option, a phased um, reduction. And uh, Commerce's staff said it's basically not within the scope of the law. However, there are other amendments that the commission could propose within the chapter three point six four. Such as um, increasing the amount of affordable housing units included in a project more than twenty percent. Or maybe you increase the number of units that have to be built to something more than fifteen. So those types of changes could be made, but that phased out idea was something that the statute and uh, the agency at the state level uh, don't recommend and don't. Don't think are even within the scope of the law. So this is where the city uh, department did recommend the change. Uh, as you know, there was actually three or four other maps presented to you during the public hearing. Uh, but this is the only area in the city where planning and public works is recommending an expansion. The other ones are, are recommended to stay as they are. Uh, and so the pink areas, once again, on this map is where the expansion would be as it sits. And the way the um, draft resolution in front of you tonight is written, this is the only one that's included within it. So if you wanted to amend that, you would need to make an oral amendment this evening. So we're here tonight for action and then it'll move on to the council starting May twelfth. They will have their own public hearing process and then uh, take action probably in June unless they need more time for public uh, discussion. So the recommended motion coming from the department to you is to approve Resolution twenty twenty five oh one, expanding. The R T A in the central business district and then also updating the M F T E program in chapter three point six four. As presented to the commission. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
So moved.
Have a second.
Yes, I would. Or um, I propose a different motion. Let's go back to the map. I could. I could support, so I would move to. Prove expansion including. Half parcel areas north of a hundredth. And I guess with the amendment that it, that the expansion only include.
So Mr. Chair, if I could, um, if there is no second to Mr. Larson's motion, that would, motion would die for lack of a second. Um, but in order to start amending the resolution, you do need to have it on the floor for discussion. So if someone could make a motion in second to open it up for discussion, then we can have the amendment from Ms. Talbot or and any others that you want to cover. Somebody, once again.
Do I, do I hear, do I, do I hear a second to um?
So moved. And a second.
For, for Ms. Talbo's uh, proposal to open it up for an amendment.
We need to have it on the table for discussion. So someone make that motion, please, in second fact.
I will move to open the discussion of this item.
Second.
Okay, so now you have in front of you Resolution twenty twenty five oh one as presented to you. And Ms. Talbo, I believe you have a motion. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Well, let's uh. Let's hear what the amendment proposal would look like.
So. Um, okay, so I'm. I do think so, in, in, in discussion purely here, I. I did agree with your comment at the last meeting of. Of the, of, of the application of this, um, especially, you know. Across, across, consistency across part parcels. And so that is why I could be in favor of, I mean, I can support the, the very small, uh, mine. Grove and a hundredth street. Um, and also frankly, that area, if we're talking about. Area, the residential target areas, especially as they relate to things like being well-served by transit. Uh, this area is well-served by. Bigger area that's been, you know, the topic of discussion for the, for the time. My comment at the last meeting was, was, don't think that this area is. Blighted enough? I, I don't think this area is blighted at all, to be honest, and I, I use the term blighted because I'm coming from my experience and, and. Observation and M F T E. I mean, I think, I agree that it is a tool. But I, I feel like, I feel like in some cases, we're making it sound like, well, it's such a wonderful tool. That we just need to use it everywhere and anywhere, and I think that anywhere part is what I struggle with. Because to me, this is not anywhere, this is an area that has um. That has established commercial use. And, and, and it's, it's, it's long time. Long time maintained, the same law offices, the same, which is uses the same uh, small business shops. And so to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't, um. Not the type of area that is uh, profuse with so many vacant, vacant lots that are in need of. Um, it's not, you know, there's so little of this, of this southern area that is underutilized, I guess. And so that's why I, that's, that's what I struggle with and um, that's why I. Don't find that the, expanding the R T A boundary this far uh, serves. That aim that, you know, and trying to improve the areas that we. Oh, that we need to improve the underutilized areas of the city, so.
I guess I would, I, I would say, say two things to that, cause I, I appreciate where you're coming from and. I think it looks like it's a one size fits all, but it's not um, the goal of the discussion is the R T A. That the multifamily is already zoned for this whole area. So the, the idea that this is being proposed and now development can happen. Is not, is not the case. Development can happen today. We want it to happen. We need, we need development in our city. And this, it's proposed along a, a corridor that's already considered part of our central business district. So we are not aligned with our current central business district if we say no. But I do believe, and I do believe it makes sense to have them near each other. That said, I have, we've had, heard enough public comment that this area is, there, there's concerns about. Um, you know, co- commercial, uh, we, displacement of commercial tenants. Uh, that's a commercial property, private property ownership deal. There's nothing that we, as a planning commission can uh, change on that. Um, they, they get to choose whatever they do in a zone for it today. The only thing that we're offering or could offer is aligning the R T A to match our central business district, which. Is, is really what you want cities to do. You want the cities to have these lined up so that it's not confusing. Uh, that was clearly missed the first time. To me, I think it was an accident, but um. I, I think it's something that we do, but can we? And so what I would maybe consider or propose that we, we consider, and I, I mentioned this last time that we. Um, if, if I could structure it i- in, in the way I'd like, I would say. Um, no on the twelve year extension. I didn't know we had it in any locations. I haven't heard of that um, before and so. That must have somehow flown by me, but I would say no to that, um, if we can't get a program customized for it. Or revisit that at some point. So I would say no to that. I would say yes to the R T A expansion to meet all, serve all the areas. And I would say with the amendment of this particular L, which is uh, east of. Or south of Hundredth Street, the area that's, yep, that's in, been discussed the most.
Hundred and twelve.
Um, a hundred, e- either way, it's, but from, from one twelfth all the way up to a hundredth. Um, or I, I think that's what, not wild air, it's um, I forget. So that whole area there, I would say um, w- we need to either move forward with this now. Or I would say propose doing it later, if we can look at some options and I would love this city to come. Um, staff to come back with us with some considerations on what kind of design overlay could be done. That might help promote um, the type of develop, development that the community is hoping to see. Um, and also see what other additional incentives can the city or can we offer? In that area to promote, and actually I would say promote throughout the whole area of central business district. For commercial inside of multifamily. Now, that's not something I've seen effectively done anywhere, so it's a big task. But um, given the sensitive nature of it, uh, that would be, that would be my suggestion or my, my proposal is. Yes, on all the R T A expansion with the one exception of this area to be reconsidered within six months. And if we don't have a better solution by then, I would be inclined to approve. But I, I want us to do our due diligence and try and make sure we come up with some overlay or some incentives or some other options to help get. The best possible development in the area based on the uh, abundance of feedback we heard from the community, which. Um, in all my years on the planning commission, that was the largest turnout I've, I've ever seen. So there's my thoughts. I don't know if anyone has some reactions to that, Mr. or Commissioner her.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think um, wanna, Ms. Talbo's um. Motion there or proposal to include the, the, the small section just north of uh, one hundredth street, but exclude the lower portion. I think it makes sense, um, to your point. This issue had, came up before to the planning commission and was recommended to the city council and was pushed back because. Of uh, inconsistent views uh, to be looked at again. We have looked at it again. We've had extensive discussion with the community. I think the message is very clear. Uh, this change is not a desired change at the point in jun- the juncture in time that we're at. Um, I think it's a very clear recommendation um, that we're not ready for that and our recommendation should be to not include that. That L um, portion uh, of the current um, central business district uh, residential target area. Uh, so I'm definitely supportive of excluding the southern portion, but including the northern portion.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the uh. The benefit of including the extended R T A area. Is to provide the opportunity for low-income housing. In the multifamily properties that already exist in this uh, particular area.
Affordable housing. Excuse me.
I've worked for a low-income housing company or entity, uh, so affordable housing. Uh, within the, this, the description of it, and it seems to me that that's a benefit for the city. It doesn't do really anything more than that. Um, what I wonder, or if there's, a- and then none of the parcels are large enough to create. A substantial uh, amount of apartments. In, on additional sites there. There are a couple, uh, but. The um, uh, the thing that makes me wonder is Lakewood is replete with. Four and eight unit uh, multifamily. Properties of varying ages over the years. Uh, and shouldn't those properties too uh, be? Uh, have acc- access to the R T A benefits. And maybe a study needs to be done about that, how to incorporate them. There are largely. Uh, grandfathered, single-family residential zone areas uh, before Lakewood had zoning. There was a general zoning, if you will, and uh, and so there's a lot of free form. Uh, multifamily opportunity to uh, in, be more inclusive for affordable housing in that regard. But uh, to, to, to extend the R T A opportunity doesn't do any harm, though I can see. I do agree with you on the twelve year limitation and uh, so I would speak in favor of the extension. Uh, for the reasons that it doesn't do any harm and it should do some good.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Maybe I should. Maybe I am asking for clarification from staff, but the current. Um, applica- the per- the current permit application that is in queue now that has been submitting. That the lake house apartments, lake house apartments. Um. From what I have seen in their permit, in their submitted and approved permit materials. I did not see any indication that they are offering uh, affordable units. Are they offering affordable units?
That, so the, the lake house and what we're looking at, from what I understand, so pardon me if I speak wrong. You've looked at the application where you're looking at, I believe it's in the expanded area that you'd be looking at, the, the proposed for the expanded. So we wouldn't see anything about affordability because they're not eligible for the program, because they're not inside of the R T A. And what you're looking at, and so what they would choose or how they chose to participate in, it would be something they would look at. The threshold is still the same in terms of what the guidance is for how you get into the program. And then they make a decision whether they're going to do a twelve or an eight year as to what they're looking at.
Okay, I think, I think what I'm, what I'm seeing is that. Their interest and their um, application to develop the lot. Came in as early as, started to come in and as early as twenty twenty two before. Started to come in as early as twenty two, and then the discussion or the question about, you know. Can the R T A be expanded to allow for a tax break came after. So I guess in some, and in a way, it, if the real true nature and the real true intent. Of um, the ask was so to be supportive of affordable housing. Um, it feels disingenuine, maybe. I'm going to be so bold to say it feels disingenuine to have submitted that early. And then, and then ask the question, can I have a tax break later?
So, so the one thing I want to, to clarify. The R T A is not an affordable housing tool. It is an economic incentive tool, whether. It is an economic incentive tool, whether it's affordable housing that then does give you an allowance for 12 years or whether it's eight years. As we've talked about it, there have been multiple things that we've spoken about. We've heard it discussed as that's an affordable housing tool. We've heard it as to what we're going to look at for what potentially could come in. We've talked about what incentives we could do to, you know, incentivize. We're 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 kind of mixing and muddying the waters when we look at it. When we look at RTA, it is about an incentive tool and it's an option. That that is it. The underlying zone exists, the underlying allowances, protections, and everything exists with it. It's not a tool for removal of blight. It's not a tool for, you know, it's an incentive tool. That is what it is. So when I look at it, I look at it as an option and I understand and respect everybody's opinion on what they're looking at and how they view it or the options and things that could come out of it. 100% from everyone on the council to even the citizens that have come and spoken to it. When I'm speaking to it, what I'm saying is it's an option for a person on what they choose to do. Not giving the option is removing that from the already owner of a commercial property. When we're speaking to saying, well, there's already a commercial property there. It doesn't need to be redeveloped. That in an extent, by not allowing the option is making a decision for a commercial property owner, what their option is on that or what their access to the ability to do that is. So I'm I'm trying to just be be plain about what we're speaking to and what we're looking at because we're coming at it from multiple different angles. And I know it's a complicated topic at times and how we look at it. But this is about an option. That's really it.
Well, I've heard a few a few approaches. One, just to prove it outright. Two, approve it with review for overlay. Three, approve it. And I'm I'm assuming everything's approved with all the other RTAs. We're just kind of focused in on this one that we've, you know, we do have Springbrook, Oakbrook, Tillicum Mall in the mix. I don't, I haven't heard any any contrary opinion on any of those areas. So I apologize, but I am focused just on this one. And then the last last one was, yeah, we approve all the others. Leave this one off the table for right now.
And so, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the other expansions are not included. The the way the resolution is written, it is only recommending this change. All of the other ones are not recommended by the department and they're not included in the resolution. So if you want to incorporate those expansions, that would need to be an amendment to the resolution.
I apologize. What what were they proposed for before then? Why were they shown on the track?
They were shown as areas that the department had looked at, but they were not recommended. They were just informing you that these other spots in the city were reviewed. But as it sits in front of you tonight, the only recommended expansion is this one that you've been concentrating on.
What page is the resolution on in our?
Whole thing begins on page. Sorry, page five. And the resolution is at.
Forty three.
Thank you, 43.
I I guess I'm a little discouraged because we've been talking about this for quite some time. And I think we've brought it up that the all these areas were being reviewed. I don't know why we even had maps up if they were up for a discussion and not being considered and not part of this.
All I can say is that Ms. Newton is not here tonight to explain all of the thinking, but it was to show what the department had reviewed. But the only recommended one was the one for the downtown. If the commission wants to add them in, you can. You can certainly make that recommendation and incorporate it into the resolution. Well, I'd say we would like to approve the expansion in the other parts of the city as well.
I guess I'd be more interested to hear why they weren't and so that we were, you know, we're not, we don't want to go blind.
Oh, not a problem. When we looked at it and we pulled back to explain the areas we were looking at, that was informational as to what we look at for the planning commission to take in and see what the staff had seen and where they're at. In the end, a recommendation does get made by staff in terms of the resolution and what they're proposing. The planning commission has the ability to alter that. You can make an alternative recommendation. You can say, no, I'm interested in Springbrook, Oakbrook, anything we've looked at, right? In terms of what had been on there, that is within the power of the commission. What we bring forward is a recommendation and a resolution. We're not building the resolution on the floor. We're showing what the recommendation, staff recommendation is. And you have the alternative to to go a different direction. Or if you feel that something else or a different area, you can make that. But that's that's the process and where we're at. We spoke to it before in case there were questions and there could be feedback going back and forth and show the pros and cons of the different areas.
There's a pretty robust matrix buried in here of what he's talking about. Why those recommend, why the recommendation of not move forward with those was by area. I can't put my finger on it.
I must have missed that.
Because I read it.
I I mean, to me, those are areas that they they need, they need any any extra tools to help get stuff going. I mean, they need to, they need to spark catalyst. I don't know that this will be enough to do it, but it doesn't hurt to put it on the table. But that that's just my opinion.
I I agree that the Springbrook area and the freeway area all the way up to 112th Street about. We talked about having those areas that are not exactly blighted, but certainly ripe for redevelopment and some redevelopment already occurring near the station district. And that's the that's the nature that that neighborhood is becoming is a new neighborhood. And and there's a lot of apartment investment over there right now. And I don't see that that is included or am I wrong?
So again, really what I'm going to speak to is staff makes a recommendation. Planning council can make a different recommendation. They can amend, they can do if you see another area that you feel to move forward with. I guess we're we're not really building the resolution while we're at the planning commission. We bring it forward for for appearance. We speak to it and then there's a vote or there's alterations that are made to it. Open to any of that because that is the the power of the planning commission and what they want to look at. But we covered those before. If we're moving forward with this recommendation, if there's alternatives, let us know and we will modify the resolution. Could it is your resolution and what you want to present to the council as a recommendation. It's not off the table. It wasn't part of our recommendation.
No, I I appreciate it. Thanks for clarifying. I I guess for me, I I am concerned about the all the other areas. And I ended up looking at every one of them very closely because I wanted to make sure they aligned with the plan and they made sense for the area and that it would incentivize or hopefully incentivize someone to want to do something in there. Each of these areas has a high, high population of the 80% AMI and below. And we need the 80 to 100 and the 100 plus. And we're not even coming close to hitting that. So that's why I I push for these ones. I I think that would be, I would still stick with my proposal, which in this case it would be to amend it and add these in the recommend or the considered areas as areas that would be approved for the RTA. I know that's a bit of a change from what was written in the amendment, but that would be my proposal.
It makes me wonder whether making the RTA an area is an approach that's not quite complete. If we make the availability of all housing in excess of four units in the city of Lakewood eligible for RTA benefits, isn't that what we really want to do? The zoning takes care of itself in terms of whether you would build new in an area. But the benefit that we're looking for, this card that we can play that does create some benefit would be available then and in just manner for all multifamily property owners in the city.
Ms. Talbot.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, yeah, I feel like so the, you know, the RTA maps that Miss Spirit you just showed, those are the areas that we should be talking about. Because to me, it's the it's to me, the 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 areas that I think are urgent need of discussion are those that are most highly underutilized. And those areas, those parcels that are more highly underutilized, those are the areas that need the strategic planning kind of and also the 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 commitment from what however you do it, however it's whether it's staff to do to over forums to kind of encourage, whatever it is. And so I could support adding those in this resolution. I want to, I kind of want to back up a little bit just to put, to revise my resol- revise my proposal to make it consistent with the resolution that's in front of us tonight. Because there's various components at play here. So my motion, I I move to approve resolution 202501 with the amendments, with the following amendments. Removing section one, 3.64020 because I agree with your sentiment that of removing the extension for projects receiving an initial eight year, 12 year exemption. Because I agree with that. And amending LMC 3.64030 to amend the designated residential target area of the downtown to include only the proposed expansion between Lake Grove and 100th Street. Hope that I have tackled this sausage made this out correctly here. I think what you were, I think your motion to approve resolution 202501 as it as it stands.
Or I'm sorry, approve it. Mr. Chair, might I help clarify?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So in front of the commission right now and on the screen for the public as well as resolution 202501 is proposed. And what it is doing is two amendments under the the code that regulates the MFTE program within Lakewood. O2O subsection G is talking about allowing the extension of the 12 year program, provided that at least 20% of the housing must be occupied by households earning no more than 70% of the AMI for Pierce County. It already includes the station district and the Springbrook RTA. So this is strictly looking at the Lakewood, excuse me, central business district area RTA expansion that you've seen that map for a number of times. The second part that's in 3.64 is the section about how and when applications are filed. So I don't think there's been any resistance or wish for change there. And then 360, excuse me, 364030 subsection C is the map. And the map right now for the sub area in the resolution includes all of the areas in pink. So what I believe Ms. Talbot was just doing was saying remove the proposed amendment in OT O2O sub G, which is allowing the 12 year extension within the central business district. Unless you're saying remove the section for all sub areas or sorry, all residential target areas in the city. And then also changing this map to where it would only include this part of the proposed expansion, but not the part to the south of that area. Is that an accurate?
That's the way I heard it. Is that right? Would 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 you be amenable to having, including the other areas that were proposed before or discussed before, but not proposed? I guess I'd look to the rest of the commissioners. How how are you guys feeling about that? I don't want to force it.
Adding the other areas in?
Yeah.
I like the idea for all the reasons that we've described. These are areas that you help. These are areas that need development. These are areas that could use more densities in the right ways.
We could also request it as a future action.
It's also worth highlighting too, that in the chamber's letter to us and to the city council, they recommended these other areas be included.
Thanks.
And Ms. Talbot, are you suggesting with your amendment to remove the 12 year extension for all areas of the city or simply not include the expansion of that option into the central business district?
I'm good with you there.
I thought it was throughout the city.
This amendment is only adding it into the central business district zone outside of the tax increment area. It is already allowed.
Going to maintain that it stands, that it applies throughout the city, that my that.
Okay, so you're saying we would remove subsection G altogether from this chapter. So you're removing the option anywhere in the city for a 12 year extension.
And yes.
Okay. And so, Mr. Chair, my question for you, do you want to take each one of those pieces as a separate amendment? Or do you want to take this as a single amendment to the proposed resolution?
I I'd be fine putting them all together. I mean, it's not like we have, you know, 20 pieces. I think we only have four here, right? Or three plus, three plus and to add. Yeah, I don't see there's any. I don't see there's any issue with the other.
Are we talking about bulking the amendments together instead of voting on them individually?
That's my question.
I would like to see on the amendments, an individual rundown. I'm I'm supportive of the extension.
That's fine. That it doesn't take much more time to do that. Let's let's start with that section 1G. I guess in to clarify, because I would like to propose that we do add in these other areas. And I I should clarify, I think these areas need this incentive. But I I also, it's not that I don't think we should have it in the central business district. The reason why cities put in the central business district is to incentivize and really try and shape the development in the spots that you want it. So all the cities that have done that have effectively seen growth in areas that were zoned for that. And that's that's why they do it. I and I like that and I do want to see it centralized. I'm okay leaving that area off. But in central business district, that's where you do want to see development grow, go vertical. And so I I I am supportive of the program all throughout that. But I I, you know, to the point here, we're just talking about excluding that bootleg or whatever that was proposed to be added. So we're just saying no to that is what I'm hearing. Is that fair?
Yeah, so just to read it, Mr. Chair, if we can go piece by piece, I think we've had enough discussion. There's enough months here.
Yeah, can can we make it more confusing before that?
No, but if you don't mind, I'll 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 walk you through if that's all right.
Yeah, no, go ahead. I was just, I was joking.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor already and the discussion has happened to simply adopt resolution 202501 as proposed. There has been this discussion now and a consensus that you would like to amend that. So we're going to walk through each amendment one vote at a time.
Can you put it up on the screen if you don't mind?
I can put up the original version of it. So this is the recommended emotion as it stands. And what that includes is the pink map that you've been talking about where it's between 100th and north and then that other larger section to the south. It does not include any other RTA expansion areas. It does add the 12 year extension option for the area in the central business district. It is already present in code for the other two areas. And then it also includes, what was the third thing? Sorry.
That the other language was one.
Yeah, the the other areas. So I would just suggest that if everyone is agreed that we're ready to start voting on amendments, the first one would be to amend to incorporate the other residential target areas discussed originally with the commission and held as part of the public hearing. So if there's someone that wants to make that motion, second it and then take the vote.
I'll I'll make a motion that we add in the others that were reviewed and not included in the recommendation at this time.
Second.
Are we okay to vote on it?
Yes, please go ahead.
We'll go ahead and vote all in favor of that amendment.
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? Thank you. Let's go to the next one.
So the next amendment would be to remove the language in Lakewood municipal code 3.64.020G, which would be the language that. which would be the language that currently authorizes a twelve-year extension in areas other than the central business district. It would be removing that so it would not apply anywhere in the city.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the removal of G so that twelve-year extensions are not allowed in any of the RTA. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What opposed?
Nope, nay.
Can I see who said no? Karen Larson, okay, thank you. All right, with five here, three yays, two nays, that amendment does pass. So the third amendment would be sorry, amending the central business districts RTA to include the area between 100th Street and I'm sorry, I'm going to get the name wrong of the area of the street, Lake Grove Street Southwest, but not include the area south that's proposed. So just the smaller area to the north on the, the map that's included in the resolution.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, so you now have in front of you an amended Resolution 2025-01. So it will include the boundary expansions for Oakbrook, Springbrook and Tillicum. And then just a portion of what was proposed for central business district, just those areas within 100th Streets Southwest to the south and Lake Grove Street to the north. It removes the twelve-year extension for the areas it's already authorized for in the code by removing three six four oh two oh sub G. And it's, excuse me, it also otherwise goes forward as proposed. Those are a motion to approve 2025-01 as amended.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank, thank you for your patience.
Thanks for breaking it all down.
Yeah. We.
Mr. Chair, one, one thing, when we were, when we reversed the order of business, we left off the portion about procedures, planning commission procedures. Are we going to move that to a future?
We can do that, but we still have one more item in addition to that, sorry.
The comp plan amendments, right?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to those or?
And that, this will be a faster conversation, I believe. So let me just walk you through this very quickly. You've had a number of meetings about the 2025 comprehensive amendment package and you've also had a public hearing that was extended to a second meeting for written comment. And so all of that is in front of you as part of the record. There were two comments in the public hearing. Once was, one was a question about whether there was a difference in allowed uses in air corridor versus industrial one. And that's in relation to the one requested rezone to a split zoning for a parcel over that's partially in air corridor one. And then the other was a comment from a representative of LRI Waste Connections in favor of that same rezone. There is one new amendment in front of you tonight as part of this package because since that time, since we had this in front of you last, it became known to the PPW, the Planning and Public Works Department, that we have this odd little piece of Harry Todd Park that is actually up in the R2 zone when it should be in OSR1. And then there's also this, this little tip over here that is in MF2 right now, that should also be OSR1. So this is an addition of the existing boundaries of the park to be all zoned correctly as OSR1. That is the only proposed change here. There's no change to use or intensity. It's just to clean up the, the boundaries of that zone for that entire parcel.
Quick question for you on this. I saw this come through and I was curious, what does that do for properties along that street? Does that change any?
It does not change anything. All this is doing is for allowed uses sake within the parcel. OSR1 has a certain list of allowed uses. R2 has a different list and MF2 has a third, or yeah, MF2 has a third list. So right now, if you were to try to just look at this on paper, what can you do on this single parcel? You have three different lists of uses. So this is simply to clarify, this is a single tax parcel that is a park. It doesn't affect the other parcels surrounding it. It's just affecting this.
There's no additional buffers or anything like that required?
These are actually roads here, so it just keeps it the same distance from the park for those parcels. It's a road around there and that's, that's the change is to make sure that the parcel's all one zone.
Thank you.
Sure. The following table reflects the recommendations you've already seen for the rest of them. If you'll recall, there were two amendments where the recommendation was to take no action because they weren't needed. And that is the update regarding climate change and resiliency for a couple of elements. And then also no action regarding the downtown subareas slash regional growth centers, intensity and growth per Puget Sound Regional Council. So those two are not included in tonight's Resolution 2025-02 for you. What you do have in that resolution is one through thirteen. And we would ask, the, the department would ask that you make an oral amendment to add 2025-14, which is again, this newly discovered little snafu on the zoning there.
Any questions or clarifications on this? Talbot?
Regarding 2025-11, there was some, we did have some discussion about establishing a minimum size of four hundred square feet. And I also agreed with Holmes and Mr. Lynn Holmes, your sentiments and justifications about that. I think that I, I did notice that in the co-living housing amendments, that there is a minimum unit size of, I think it was three hundred square feet. And so a minimum ADU size of four hundred square feet seems to make sense that at least a livable space is provided. So I would prove resolution with adding Amendment 20, 2025-14, the Harry Todd, and amending 2025-11 establish the minimum square footage as at four hundred square feet for attached and detached ADUs.
Do we need to go through the request to prove as it is, or can we move immediately to that?
What I'll need from you is, actually, I'm sorry, there's one more here. There is an amendment requested by you as well to 2025-07. And that's just to update within the camp commute trip reduction, thank you. List of, of employee, employers that are subject to that program to the list that you see here. So this is the list of suggested changes in order for this resolution. And so the first step is to have someone make the motion to approve 2025-02 as presented. And then once that's on the floor with a second, you would start to make amendments to it.
Do we have anyone ready to approve it as amended?
Move.
And now we can start talking amendments. So feel indulged, Mr. Chair. Is there support for adding an amendment to Amendment 2025-07 to update the commute trip reduction eligible employers in the city as listed here on the slide in front of you?
I'll move for those seven. Sir, second. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The second amendment would be to add in a parcel, sorry, add in Amendment 2025-14 to rezone parcel two two zero 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 two one to exclusively open space recreation one. If there's someone willing to make that amendment.
May, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then the third would be to establish in 2025-11 a minimum size for accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached of four hundred square feet.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
So now you have in front of you, Mr. Chair, Resolution 2025-02 as amended, ready for final approval by the commission.
We'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that was much smoother.
So that, Mr. Chair, is all that is on your agenda for this evening. Thank you for working through a lot of very complicated issues and hearing a lot of different types of topics this evening.
So the planning procedure, we'll pick up next time, right? All right, thank you. Any other updates from council or the city at this time?
Just a note about our May schedule. May seventh, there will be a regular meeting. The following Monday, May 12th, is your joint study session with the council. So please mark your calendars now. It would be starting, I believe, at seven PM. I'll make sure and send you a note to clarify that. But it is the opportunity to have a sit-down once a year with the council. They love to hear from you and it's very timely because you'll be there the same night that they start talking about both of these things. The MFTE RTA issue as well as the comp plan package. So please plan on May 12th. And as a result of that, you will not have a meeting on May 21st. So in May, it's just May 7th and then the following Monday, and then you're done.
I won't be in attendance on the 12th. I'll be traveling for work. So they'll need a voice, so can you take that?
Yes.
And then everywhere, they'll invite everyone to talk and share, but I, there's usually needs to be a point person for that and it's the chair, so.
And I will not be available on May 7th.
Well, we'll make sure to do a lot of business.
Seven PM.
Posted on any updates. All right, well, if there's nothing else.
Nope, we're done, Mr. Chair.
So adjourned. Thank you.